Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the January 2023 monthly meeting of the Village Board, folks in the audience and online. We are thin in the ranks tonight. Thank you Karen Herbert for stepping in for our clerk this evening. And the deputy mayor is not joining us tonight. We hope everyone out there is who is feeling icky gets feeling better soon. So, and we don't have a lot of our staff tonight either, so we should, we'll be moving through things fairly quickly this evening. So may I have a roll call, please?
Yes, Mayor Foley.
Yeah.
Trustee Fatty.
Yeah.
Trustee Bosie.
Yeah.
Trustee Starbuck.
Yeah.
And trustee Woods is absent. Is that correct?
Okay. Okay, opportunity to request vote to add or modify items. Any requests? I would just say that item nine B, what I was going to discuss under board business, if it makes sense under our discussion of the accountants report, so I'm going to move that into that portion. Okay.
Do we need to make a motion on that with a second?
We do, okay. See, you're already invaluable in the person on the village board. May I have a motion to make that change? Second, all in favor? In terms of announcements, I just want to lay out our upcoming workshop schedule. Next week, the 18th, we'll be talking about parking plan rollout. We had a discussion on ticketed events and I'll provide materials in advance for that. On the 25th, the zoning code revisions. The ad hoc committee on the zoning code revisions will make a report on progress. And then on the first of February, we'll have a workshop with the short term rental crew following up on our their presentation and our subsequent attendance at an ICOM conference on several of us attended an ICOM conference on the evolving laws around short term rentals. Okay. Michelle is not with us, the accountant, so I'm going to pull out a few, she's not, right? Pull out a few highlights from the, from the financial report. Letters were mailed for unpaid taxes. They need to be paid by the 31st, so they'll be sent to the county and the county will deal with collections from there. The villages made whole for taxes unpaid, but it all comes out of, ultimately it comes out of the same pot. So please pay your taxes by 31st. We have had communications with our retirees and our employees about changes and contributions for healthcare that gone up. And Michelle next turns to working on tax filing requirements, W2s, et cetera. And shockingly, we are back around budget season. So in the packet today is included a proposed timeline, a preliminary timeline for our budgeting from February on through adoption in March. And we have before us tonight, as sort of a housekeeping measure, as we do periodically, budget transfers to move items among budget lines. To make sure that where we have what we need, where we need it and where we don't need it, we're shifting it into other spots. So I'm going to read the, I'll read a portion, the, the, the sort of most important element of this. It is long. I don't want to make everyone suffer through a reading of these budget adjustments line by line, but they are available in the backup packet for tonight on the village website. So I will make a motion for resolution 022023 authorizing budget adjustments. Resolve that, one, the board of trustees, the village of Cold Spring hereby approves the following budget adjustments for the 2022-2023 fiscal year. The first is to reallocate staff salaries to correct departments. Second is to reallocate for supplies, $50 line, 3,000 is the first. Third, to reallocate from payroll expenses for change from building inspector employee to Phillips Town contractual inspector services. That's amount of 22,400. And then moving among that lines, $789 to reallocate to proper expense accounts for email and the acquisition of teams for the office and staff. And the last is $7,000 to reallocate from outside contractor tractor repairs to supplies for in-house repairs. And I think a chunk of that is thanks to the town of Kent for the Northern Avenue project. So that's it. The account is hereby authorized, the accountant is hereby authorized to transfer such funds immediately. So Catherine made the second and the vote is a roll call.
Yes, trustee Bosie.
Yes.
Trustee Fatty.
Hi.
Trustee Starbuck.
Hi.
Mayor Foley.
Hi.
Trustee Phillips absent. By resolution officially adopted on January 11th by a vote of four with one absent.
Thank you. Do we have Bugsy with us tonight? I don't think so. Okay. So highway. These, that's been sort of unpredictable, these high, high and low temp swings and are we going to need salt one day or water pumps the rest? But I'll leave the details of Bugsy's report online and just pull out a couple of things that I think are notable in this month. Lex has been working toward reorganizing the roadways and facilities department and sort of bringing new structures into his work. So he's created service logs for all the vehicles and equipment, which is going to make budgeting easier and give us a sense of what what's worth fixing and what isn't, maybe what's more of a money, money pit than it should be. And he did cold patch the potholes. We are aware of the potholes that have been really problematic on Benedict and he cold patched others on Main, Lund Terrace and Market Street. As we go into the spring and work with the engineer on the roadways assessment, we'll figure out which get hit first, but he did at least try to fill in the holes. If people aren't banging their cars so much going in and out of food town. So that's good. Any other comments or questions from the highway report for living facilities?
We should note for those who didn't see it that the fence is down?
Ah, the fence is down in front of Riverfront Park.
Seems to be well received online.
Be well received. It really does make a difference for how you experience the waterfront in the street.
Beautiful.
Yeah. And it's one less one to hate. It's a good thing. End points, I think we do have water and wastewater with us now through bay area.
I am.
Hi.
Hello.
From your report.
Well, the reservoirs are back up to just a little bit below where they were at this time last year. So that's a good thing. The endpoints getting ready for the second round of relocation and the upgrade to the newer technology. That's going to be in the, I think the week of the 20th in February. We only had one water leak in December, which was good. Aqueduct connection, we still are getting outfits coming up and touring the facility to prepare for the bidding. We just had one yesterday, so I think we'll have a pretty good turnout on that.
Someone's going to have a late night. Those are due tomorrow at 2:00 PM.
Uh, well, this was yesterday. So yeah, I mean, but we had a couple last week and yeah, one yesterday, but still, yes, it's there's a lot of contractors and interested in it. So it's always a plus. Storage tanks, we got the leaks repaired, but we'll have to pass off on the inspection until the warmer weather because most companies won't run their ROV remote operated vehicle camera systems in the tanks in the cold weather. We had GenTech do our servicing for the emergency generators for the storm seasons. Finished water pump, we do have one of the valves needed to be taken out of service. It's a specific valve that needs specific text to handle it. So we were getting quotes and we just got one coming in from Harper Hands, who was regional rep for it. It is roughly 2,500 a day to work on the three valves, but we do have six in stock. They haven't been looked at since I've been here, so they all should get looked at and inspected. I can forward that quote over when I get the formal quote in.
Okay, great. Thank you. And while all three of us are present, Laura and I confirm that we'll meet you tomorrow for dam walk. So we meet at the water plant.
Oh yeah, we can do that. What time, 9:30?
30.
Sounds good.
Laura is going to give an update on that under her report, our meeting with engineers.
Yep.
Okay. And then on one, one other point on endpoints. So we're in the middle of this project of, of moving to smarter endpoints with the goal of less staff time given over to meter reading and more accurate, more accurate meter reads and therefore more accurate billing. There was confusion in the field when Saks was assessing people's houses. Some locations had leaks, some locations were identified as having galvanized pipe. Very few were identified as having lead and that raised concerns among property owners of, do I have to, do I have to strip out all my, all my piping? The answer is, and we're going to be communicating this directly to each of the household members. We did follow up with Saks. You can, if there, if there is a leak, it must be repaired for the endpoint to be added. But if the pipe is not leaking and you are made aware of and accept the responsibility for the pipe in its condition as it is and understand that they'll be longevity of the connection to the endpoint may not be as long as if you were to update the connection line directly, then we can go ahead and do the work. So everyone can stop panicking, but you don't need to rip out everything in your house. There was some miscommunication thinking that people had to do piping all through, and that's not the case. If you have questions, give us a call here at Village Hall, but as I said, we'll be following up directly with individual property owners. Any questions for Matt? We're going to come back to dam at the end, Matt, but certainly if you're welcome to stay if you'd like, but don't feel obliged to sit through all the other things.
All right. Well, if I do not make it to the end, I'm sure you guys can tell us in tomorrow morning.
Okay, see you then. Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, we have an annual summary from code enforcement. As a reminder, we are working collaboratively with Phillips Town. We are processing applications and collecting fees here in the village and contracting with the town to do inspections and make referrals. We have a 2022 recap, which is a calendar year, so it doesn't coincide with our budget year, but just to give you a sense of where we are over the 12 months since we made the agreement with the town, we've collected $25,069 in revenue. And our expense is, has been $16, excuse me, $1,600 a month in fees for service to the town. So over the year, that's 14,400 over a 12 month period with revenue around 10, a little more than 10,000. If you were to try to compare that number against Michelle's number, it's not going to match because calendar year and fiscal year aren't the same, but that gives you a sense of where, where we're going. That's good from that perspective. Police. So Larry is not able to join us either. We are trying to find a date with the ad hoc committee to deliver its report. They have, they were contemplating some changes to the report. They've decided to leave it as is, so we can share it out again. We just need to figure out when it'll be, it'll be February. We're pretty packed in on, in January already. Larry wanted everyone to know that he is in training on the new CAD system from the county. They, it is an upgrade of systems both in the cars and at the station that creates real time interconnection among departments across the county. So us, town of, town of Kent, town of Carmel, village of Brewster and sheriff's department. It is a a very user friendly database that provides more information to an officer in real time on the way to calls. So a good example is if there's someone who is an emotionally disturbed person and an officer needs to take particular care at that address, that's noted in the record so they can see that before they arrive and, and know who's coming from where for response. So the majority of the cost, we understand to be borne by the county, but there will be a maintenance cost to each municipality. We don't have those numbers yet and I'm hoping, I think we have our legislator with us. Hopefully she can help us get some clarity on that with the protective services committee. But Larry is really pleased with it. And one of the reasons he is pleased is that it will help him produce better reports than this Excel spreadsheet and help him to be able to better track trends. So his reporting will be better. And that's, that's among the concerns of the ad hoc committee that we'd be able to look at, at long-term trends. So good stuff. And so that I can't, without Larry, I can't answer more questions on that. Fire company. Of note, the number of calls are up for the year 2022, 205 calls over roughly 175 last year. The good news is, and MJ is in the room to witness it, the good news is mountain, mountain incidents were down. 12 over the year and 10 of them were rescues. Others were reports of smoke or actual response to fires on the mountain. So that's a good thing. So they're really busy. They have a small number of people and just a reminder that the fire company is 100% volunteer and actively recruiting new membership. So if you think you got the right stuff, reach out to Cold Spring FD Chief at gmail.com or just stop by the firehouse on a Tuesday evening at seven. Everyone's welcome. Justice court, revenue of $5,020 this month and the breakdown of the revenue can be seen online. Standing boards and committees, it's quiet right now. Let's see, approving new signage for the Highlands Coral Society at the Methodist Church. And I think that's a really exciting civic thing that's happening in the village that Methodist Church goes down to last numbers of members has been revitalized by the Highlands Coral Society. They use the church every Sunday for their, for their meetings. I can hear the organ and the singing from my house. It's fantastic to see life on that parcel again. So they will have new signage. And then some exterior updates to deal with water infiltration. They are making progress on design standards with the the laid out version. So I hope that we're going to get a peek at that very soon. It's long, long coming and much needed before the next construction season. Planning board. Planning board was pretty quiet in December. One of their meetings had to be canceled. They, they experienced similar technical difficulties that we did last month that has been taken care of. They did meet on the 22nd and approved minutes and they did go through secret training with the village attorney. So that's good. Part one of that process. Zoning Board of Appeals, no action, but I would like to commend Chair Worth. He has been working diligently with the ad hoc committee on zoning update and really contributing a lot. His brain is really valuable in that process. So although his, his board is not meeting, he is actively engaged in looking about zoning in the village and helping us look ahead. Tree advisory boat board, big item, also quiet because it's cold season, but they are beginning dormant season pruning at the end of February. Let's see them out and about working on village trees. Recreation Commission. Few small updates. The the chair and I have been having conversations about code updates that need to be made to the rec commission chapter in the village code to more, better reflect what they actually do and what the village expects of them. So there will be, we're sort of redlining things now and we'll be delivering drafts to that committee and to the trustees to look at, and then of course presenting it all in public session and public hearing. I think hats go off to Michael Turtin, who made a recommendation to the Recreation Commission that the surveys that were done in the last couple of years about how folks want to use the parks, didn't necessarily make space for how seniors want to use the park. Passive activities that seniors might want to do in our parks. And so they're, they're tweaking that, the survey and are going to do a targeted survey on those questions. I think I'm rooting for Bachi, Michael. Okay, we have, we do have a couple of great candidates to fill the two open spots on that commission and Jeff and I are approaching them initially and hope that we can soon for next month, make the recommendation on to member, on membership for that. And also as we head into budget season, Jeff has volunteered to help for us to do a price comparison on maintenance in the parks. Bidding out lawn mowing and we maintenance, et cetera. That gets to be a lot in the middle of the summer with our small roadways facilities crew. So we want to see if it, is it, is it worth it for us to, to bid that out? He's going to help with that and we'll report back to you all. Okay. Municipal and government partners, someone else's voice. Hello, deputy supervisor.
Good evening, everybody. Happy New Year, everybody. Sorry, initial last few months because we had meetings ourselves on.
Did you, what's that? Karen, do you know how to turn the camera?
Yes, I do. Sorry.
You're welcome to have the table if you'd like.
Yeah, be comfortable.
All right. As you know, we're still in the process of a clean highway garage. Supposedly I was told just the other day that the electrical panel will be waiting for us from Ukraine finally showed up is what I've been told. So, so hopefully the electricians will get that going because right now we don't have the right power in the building. We can't move into our office space at, at just a good time without this electrical being 100%. So we expect to hopefully be in office space sometime in February. I hope that continues to stay the, the day we had a representative, CCA, I've read in the paper, he was, they had representative down at the village board too, I guess, one day last week, a week before. So let's see what, let's see what they come up with. I'm a little bit on the fence myself personally. They have to win me back to be honest right now. I mean, I'm all for green power and everything, but the way everything transpired over the last couple of months, what it ended up wasn't very good. So I think a lot of people feel the same way I do, but that's up to me. He has to make his own decisions on that. We passed a resolution in the village of Cold Spring for winter snow removal and ice control. You're more than welcome. We had a pass a resolution for outreach worker for social, the Putnam County seniors, senior resource for town of Phillips Town. And supposedly they said they did hire somebody that, that this, for this position. The last few years they really didn't have a person. They said they were able to accommodate everyone's request with the staff that they had. So.
So there will be a new, there will be a new hire here in the Phillips Town.
That's what they're saying.
How many days a week?
Though I really don't have the details on. Discuss the highway superintendent being elected as an appointed position. As you know, Adam Polteling is our superintendent highways right now. There's an elected position. We're considering about making it an appointed position, but it just, just started talking about that. Something to consider. Passed resolution by a new Ford F250 with a cloud for the highway department was in the budget. Passed resolution retained Ron Gainer as our town engineer and Max Garfunkel as our wetlands inspector. Both of these gentlemen doing a standing job for both of them are very, very happy with their work that they do. E-waste is still going on. We collect an awful lot. The garage up there is almost full. So it'd probably be at the end of January, I'm probably maybe stopped for a little while and then probably going to start charging people to drop off their e-waste. Because right now it's been free. And I was just told the other day that well, I just, today as a matter of fact, Royal is no longer accepting e-waste either.
Is that so? Okay.
I got an email from them today. So I don't know what people, well, we're going to still collect it as long as we possibly can, but I'm, I'm pretty sure it started in February. We're going to start charging for this. Kind of have to recoup some of our expenses.
So will you be, will the town be identifying another location for?
Oh no, we're going to, we'll still have it there.
Then what will you do with it?
Oh, we, I have a company that's going to come pick it up whenever we're ready.
And is that, is that something that if Royal is no longer taking that waste, could villagers participate in that as well?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
As they have been. That's great.
But like I said, I think starting in February, it's going to be.
Well, it costs.
Of course, it's right, it's possible. People, we have above 170 families still enrolled and we're still encouraging many people to keep it going. It's been pretty popular. Every time I talk to somebody in Food Town or something, they seem, seem to like it. So we're going to continue with that program at least for the next year. So.
Fantastic.
Question. Um, we've gotten a lot of questions or just responses about the military banners. And I know last meeting that the town, that I saw that the town had, you guys said you were going to have a vote. I, after like reviewing with legal advice. So where, where are you guys on that one?
Well, as far as I know, we, last I checked with our, our, my supervisor and our attorney, we did not have to pass a resolution on it whatsoever. Okay. So we're, we're, it's, it's basically a private company that's doing this. So if people want to participate, they can. Supposedly they have all the rights and so forth to hang them on the telephone poles. We're looking to probably recommending start doing up on 301 from Route 9 on, on into the village, something like that. Well, into the village and also though, you know, stop, obviously they don't want, they will, we will stop at whatever the village line is, of course. So and then maybe parts of 9D after, after you leave the village Cold Spring, depending on what you guys determine you want to do, it's up to you to, to do. I don't have, right now I've only know, I submitted for my, my father, my bottom lord, I know about a handful of people that actually went through the process so far. So I only know five people that actually involved, that actually did it so far, but there could be more than, I'm not, I'm not getting tallies on right like that. I really don't. Cindy Trimble is leading this effort. So I understand she was down to speak to you too.
I think it was last month. It feels like a lifetime ago, but.
Anything else? All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming in. And our county legislator Nancy Montgomery joins us via Zoom.
Happy 2023. I'm so sorry I'm not there. I have a couple of notes here, just things that irrelevant the village on the county end. You know, we have a new county executive, Kevin Byrne, welcome. A couple of new county legislators, legislator Greg Elner and legislator Aaron Crowley. Couple of things that will affect the village. We have a new county attorney. So that's the person that will work on intermunicipal agreements with the village and anything, you know, we need to work on with the village, like the ARPA funding and things like that. So Compton, Spain is our new county attorney. And now we have many vacancies for, it's a great opportunity to bring in new talent and I'm just putting the call out there to everybody. Check the county personnel website to see the vacancies, the jobs that are available. Some pretty key jobs that require great expertise that I'm excited to bring new people on to is the soil and water conservation district. And these things obviously affect the village. The commissioner of emergency services, that's a vacant position. Calls out there for that. The director of real property tax services. The commissioner of highway and facilities and the commissioner of planning, development and public transportation. So we're recruiting talent. Please take a look at it and send us your talent. Any ideas, people, please apply. Another note, the health department, I'm sure you guys are aware, but it, it's a really important document. They recently released their 2022 to 2024 community health assessment and improvement plan. So that's a key document. It's a lot of pages. It describes health status of the county and it will develop a collaborative plan to address and identify health issues.
Is that available on the health department's website?
It is available and I can post it.
Thank you.
Just send it your way. But of note, you know, the highlights are childhood vaccinations, emerging infectious diseases, including COVID, harmful algae blooms, mental health and wellbeing, obesity, opioid misuse, racial and ethnic disparities in birth related indicators, sexually transmitted diseases, tick-borne diseases. And the thing that I'm so pleased that they included in here is transportation, which is a social determinant of health. Great data. It will, you know, help us pave the way for addressing health issues in Putnam County. Concerning, there's a batch of wastewater samples in Orange County that detected polio and our.
That's right.
In Cold Spring below. So speaking of that, I don't want to take up too much time. I thought I had a really short report, but listening to your meeting, it's like so short. So I'm trying to hurry here. Putnam offering immunization clinics. You may know this already, but January 5th, 21st and 27th for childhood and adult vaccines. And then they also offer travel vaccines. If you're going somewhere on January 14th and then migrant and seasonal farm worker vaccines is January 25th. And you know, it's better, other than just one thing of significance that we did pass a resolution at the year end. I voted no on this. I'm just being totally honest. We had a mutual aid plan presented to us, an intermunicipal agreement between the village of Cold Spring and the county for a mutual aid response plan with the sheriff's department. I felt the plan was incomplete, spelling errors, not formatted, and also the fact that the Um, I felt the plan was incomplete, spelling errors, not formatted, and also the fact that the executive officer of the village of Cold Spring had not seen it. Um, so I had a hard time approving that. Obviously, we need mutual aid, um, sort of a given. But as you may have heard, some of our mutual aid plans, um, aren't doing so well. For example, the the town of Phillips Town has a mutual aid plan for ambulance service. And we're stuck holding the bag for surrounding towns and responding and going on every call because we have paid in EMTs and no other town does. So I think this mutual aid plan requires a lot more attention. Um, and I was surprised that it passed through committee and it passed through the legislature. But hopefully, you know, you guys will take a look at it. Uh, it was also stamped confidential, so I couldn't share it with you. Figure that one out.
I really appreciate your advocacy on this. I will confirm this was not shared with the village. Um, and obviously we budget for our police, so it's important for us to understand. Um, it is only signed by, as far as I'm aware, it was only signed by the previous county executive. Um, so intermunicipal agreements don't go into effect until the other municipality sees it and signs it. Um, and it's a, it's a pretty, um, it's a pretty sloppy approach. Our police department isn't authorized to enter contracts with the county, the board of trustees is. So I appreciate you advocating on that end, and I do hope that we will receive a copy of that um, document very soon so that we can review it with either our board um, and take take the guidance of our police department. So thank you very much. Um, and I really appreciate, we don't get to see you very often because you are often in Carmel on Wednesday nights. So I'm really glad that you're here and it's super helpful, I think, for all of us to hear what's going on, um, at the county level. So thank you for that, particularly related to the, um, community health assessment. I think that's really important for us to share out on our website and via our social media. Um, and I too am pleased about transportation. That's great news. Who prepares that report?
Um, the health department, um, in collaboration with, uh, probably a hundred other organizations that they, um, use to take surveys with. So, you know, the health department with the social service department prepared it.
Good to know.
Yeah.
If you, um, if you could help us follow up on the question of of CAD and what is anticipated um, from the municipalities in terms of shared costs, so that as we're heading into our budget season, our budget season is different than the counties. We begin in February and to make sure we have the right, the numbers we need where we need them, um, it'd be good to get a sense. So maybe you could help us advocate with protective services to get more clarification on that.
Yeah, um, we did approve the funding for it, um, but obviously if it's gonna and make you guys have to pay for something, we we need to figure that out. That's, yeah, that's the first.
It is much needed by our officers of better communication systems in the cars is desperately needed, especially with call drops, et cetera, over here. So I'm really, really pleased to see the acquisition of CAD and the training in it going forward. As we think about training for our officers, we are gonna have to include for next budget season, um, days for our officers to be to be trained on the system in addition to the officer in charge. Um, but I'm I'm glad to see it finally going forward. It's just a matter of making sure that we're all on the same page about what's expected of whom and and then getting to work together.
Yeah, I'll follow up with protective on that. I did get appointed to the physical services committee. I I request a committee assignment every year. Every year I've requested, uh, to be on the health committee and the protective services committee. Um, and unfortunately, despite the fact that my colleagues publicly stated that they will extend an olive branch to me this year, um, it was just a statement. It was just obviously, as always, words. I didn't get appointed to committees. New legislators are actually chair people of committees and on many more committees. But that doesn't stop me from from working and I'm I'm here always. My favorite part of this work is the constituent services and finding resources for people in need. So I'm always here for that. Please reach out to me if I could do anything to help.
Thank you. Any questions from the board for the legislator? Thank you so much, Nan.
Good to see you all. I'm so sorry I'm not there. It looks fun.
Okay, we are on to report of the mayor and the board of trustees. I would like to hand it over to you all first since you're looking at me a lot. You're gonna be making a big report next week.
Yeah, I mean, we could just, we could mention the bids came in for signage.
Oh, right, right, go ahead.
Um, so, uh, our highway department, what, uh, we could compile a list of all the signs that we need updating for. Um, it including safety things that that were not properly signed or signs that are falling apart. But more importantly, or equally as important, is signs for our me- our new metering system and, um, the resident parking permit system that we're working on implementing. So, um, the highway department put out bids. We got three bids back or three responses back. Um, the lowest of which was under three thousand, um, which is less than needed for a bid process. So, um, the the mayor can is authorized to approve it if if you so wish.
I'm really pleased that we got the range we did.
Yeah.
More affordable than we expected.
But that's moving forward and, um, I'm just, you know, really excited. And the highway department's doing a great job getting that, you know, putting the rack in their heads around it. Um, and next week we'll have a report on.
Big picture.
Yeah, a picture in the long time timeline for it.
Thank you.
I just tied along with Liza.
Laura.
When she left me.
Laura and I had an excellent meeting this week, um, with Tectonic, the engineers who have assessed our dam in the past. Um, and on the advice of our, our current consulting engineer, um, we're gonna continue working with them on the dam because they've got, they've got the knowledge we need. Um, so I'm gonna ask Laura to report on that session and what happens next.
Yeah, sure. So so we met on January sixth. Um, Mary Cook Asse was the engineer who worked on the the original plans, uh, more than ten years ago. And, um, uh, and he has this remarkable memory for all of the details about, um, about the village and about our dams. And so he's, it's just like an amazing resource to tap. Um, and he's very glad to be re-engaged with us. Um, so we discussed that DEC grant for high hazard dams and, um, made the conclusion that it's not a good fit, um, at this time for our needs. Um, but, um, talked about some ways to move forward. So, you know, when the twenty seventeen report was made, there were a few barriers. Um, thankfully, uh, through Mayor Foley's work, we've already addressed one, which is tapping into Aqueduct. Um, we still need to, um, uh, address site access, so we're looking at options there. Um, and then we also had some good news that, um, so Tectonic produced an engineering assessment. Um, and it, uh, they're valid for ten years for a high hazard dam, and it was, um, submitted in twenty sixteen. So it means that we have until twenty twenty-six before we need a new assessment. So that's good news, cost-wise and work-wise. Um, and then he provided us with a quote, um, for ongoing services, including, um, performing this required safety inspection and, um, other ways to, um, meet with us and, uh, provide guidance and work toward um, the, uh, design and repairs. Um, he also provided us updated cost estimates for dam repair work, um, so that we have, uh, proper, uh, today's numbers, um, to work from. So it's all really good, um, I think. And we'll be doing a site visit tomorrow, um, uh, with, uh, with Matt. Um, so I think we're all looking forward to working with Tectonic again.
Do you, uh, have the numbers with you, the estimates with you?
Um, I was, um, the estimates for the dam work.
Yes, the so sort of the es- escalated estimate based on time passing.
Yeah, so this is the, um, the schematic construction cost estimate. Um, in twenty seventeen, it was four point two million. Um, four million one hundred seventy-eight thousand. And then, uh, he made some additions, uh, and then the anticipated budget is that at least five million three hundred seventy-two thousand. So that's an increase of a little over one million um, from the twenty seventeen cost. So for, so eventually, four point two to five point four.
When we walked out of this meeting, I, yeah, I was felt such relief. Um, it was so great to make that connection and get a, get a sense of what's what's real after all this time has passed. So I felt, although it's a lot of money, it's not as much as I think we were all getting our heads around. Um, the other thing that was very reassuring and I and I, I hope this will, um, be something that helps us in terms of access. Once the design is complete, the engineering is complete, access is secured. He estimated between eight and twelve months for the actual work being done. Um, which is a much shorter window than I anticipated. Um, it it is a great relief and it also keeps us, if we continue at the pace we're going, right? We're making forward progress pretty regularly. If we continue at the pace we're going, we're well within that five-year window on the Aqueduct agreement too. So, like, fingers crossed.
Yeah, and I think permitting was, he anticipated a few months, maybe. So that also wasn't a a big, um, time investment.
So that's great news, right?
Yeah, but that's pretty reasonable.
Yeah, and hearing it from someone who is so knowledgeable on this, um, gives, you know, credence what he's saying, so.
Thank you. Okay, so on board business, I'm not gonna go too deeply into these things tonight because these documents are still in draft form. But I wanted to lay out a couple of things. Actually, I didn't, after having moved it, I didn't mention it under accountants report, so we'll come back to it now. Um, I circulated a draft among everyone for legislative priorities where we need to make adjustments. Make substantive changes in the code and make adjustments for, um, utility, um, within the code. I haven't heard back from anyone on on comments, um, or thoughts, any concerns. The one, one modification I would note is, um, underwater, Nelsonville, there there may be elements of code that Nelsonville needs to take up, separate and apart from our process. And we're working on getting that figured out and are in close communication with Mayor Winward. Um, but if you do, if there are things that you want to make adjustments in this, um, spreadsheet, let me know, and then we'll share it out and make it available. Okay, um, coming back to project priorities, the big lesson for me from last year's budget cycle was you have that we need to make sure we have estimates ready when we get round to setting. So, um, I'm not, I haven't quite finished the the, um, the list to put forward to you. But I am creating a list of capital projects, roadway projects, um, uh, things like rebidding, cleaning, um, things that we we thought about in the process last year but didn't have time to bid. Make sure that when we go into budget season, we're better prepared with whole numbers to work with. Um, so I'll send it out by email and we'll take it up again in in later discussion. With the timeline beginning in February, we've got some time to to work on this and bet it around a bit so that we have a sense of prioritization and know what we need to be working on and assigning out to people the work of compiling numbers. That approach seem okay? Cool. Okay, the next item is, uh, addition, um, but I think it's an important one. So New York State is on a track to get to a minimum wage of fifteen dollars. I mean, I think realistically, I'll have it, I think that's a joke for a living wage, um, at this point. And it's taken us years and years and years to get here, um, and we're still not there. Um, but one of the interesting things that the state does is exempt public employees from requirement to earn in a minimum wage. Um, and we have the opportunity now to make a decision and set an example at local level by saying we're not exempting our public employees. We want to bring them up to the state's required, um, minimum. So right now our crossing cards get fourteen dollars per hour. Um, the New York State minimum is fourteen dollars and twenty cents. Um, we are mid-budget cycle, but it's an impact of two hundred and forty dollars. And so I would make the motion that we do set example at the local level and and meet that state requirement of fourteen twenty. Okay, and then and then let's have a look at those as we get into budget cycle. Let's have a look at those. First again, I mean, we do look at everyone's salaries, um, going forward as part of budgeting anyway. Um, approval of minutes from December seventh, all of my requested changes were made. Others.
I sent one more this evening, um, just pointing out that, um, the advertisement for the military banners, um, also included the military banners themselves. So that was the only change I made.
So would you like to table it until that change is made?
I sent it to Jeff. I think if we can.
A motion forward to approve as as amended, as as modified. Okay, second? On favor? Thank you, Liza. Did I, I need to stop for a second because I left off a couple of things on, I never came back and did my report. I hope you gotta go back. I'm so interested in what everyone else is doing. I'm so excited about the dam. Okay, so a couple of things we did mention earlier, the the bids are due tomorrow at two P M for the Aqueduct connection work. Um, they'll be opened after that. There were six and I guess now a seventh site visit of contractors. Um, we're interested in the project, so I'm hoping we get a robust response. Uh, the IMA with the county is in progress. We have a draft. Um, it's been sent to all of you. This is for the ARPA money for the use on the, on the, um, filters of the water plant. Uh, just waiting to hear back from the village attorney, but it looks pretty straightforward to me. Village Hall repairs, so as we look to, um, funding coming from Dazney and our own money that we need to budget budget for and spend wisely. Um, Michelle, the accountant, and I met with, um, Justin Kaker, who was the architect on the town hall project to begin a process of documenting existing conditions so that we can prioritize from there. So he is, based on our meeting with him, he is revising a proposal. I'll give it to all of you to look at. And we can decide where to go from there. The window, the window, um, for documenting, reporting and planning out staging, um, is end of May, um, which will work nicely as we think about, as we think about budgeting. And I will note that having switched out the, um, ceiling tiles, that was purposeful to see where the leak starts. We know it's a seam right up there, um, and Michelle, who has all things in her head when I began talking about the roof, said, wait a minute, I think there's a twenty-year warranty on the roof. So I did meet with a lot of contractors on the roof. I have a good sense of what's going on up there, but now we have a con- with twenty, you know, we have a twenty-year warranty. We can go back to that contractor and try to get, get that repaired. Um, but it's good to narrow that down. Um, let's see what else do I have? The F E A F for the breakneck connector was interested, it was issued on the, um, Fuhr Trail project um, with a negative declaration for my environmental impact. So the status of the village in that document is a bit ambiguous. I'm having conversations with Matt Davidson. We were, we received that documentation undercover letter to interested in involved agencies, but we're not named as an interested involved agency. It sends an email this evening saying it was clerical error, um, and I have asked him to re- reissue those documents, um, recording properly. Um, so in the, in the end, the lead agency ultimately was not the town of Fishgill. Um, as we understood, but it was, it did revert to Parks. Um, who made the negative declaration, and I would encourage folks to read the documents. They're not yet up on the Parks website. I don't know if they're on H H F T website, the F E A F.
I don't have a copy of it yet, so as soon as we do, we'll.
It's a big, it's a, it's a big suite of documents. There are three primary documents and then supporting materials for all the documents. Um, so I imagine it's things don't happen immediately at the state level. I'm sure they'll get it up on the website. If you, in the Parks website, there is a section on master plans, um, and it's alphabetical under Fuhr Trail, uh, excuse me, under Hudson Highlands Preserve. Okay, um, Nancy, our legislator, mentioned the new county executive. Um, she and I and the town supervisor attended the swearing-in of the county executive and the new, the two new legislators. Our new state senator, Rob Rollison, um, and Dana Levinberg, our new assembly member. I will say I feel very encouraged. County Executive Byrne has been very communicative, um, and very supportive. I have thanked him for posting the commissioner seats that he has. Um, because I think it's a real statement about his feelings on the need for content expertise. We desperately need content expertise in all of those departments, highway, planning, um, emergency services, and I didn't realize about taxation, but that's, that's another good call on his part. Um, we did speak about the services that the planning department provides in other counties um, and how beneficial it would be to have that level of. um, and how beneficial it would be to have that level of functionality in Putnam. Um, so I just, I feel encouraged that he's casting a wider net. Um, and I, I feel encouraged that he is, has been so communicative over just a very short period of time in office. So fingers crossed. Um, West Point Holiday Party. So I also attended their, their holiday reception, um, at the Officers Club last week, just to to meet folks and, and, um, continue to build our relationships. There was some interest on the part of West Point last year to bring um, boats on parents' weekends to prevent parents, families from driving into the village, but to bring them directly by shuttle. Um, we weren't able to, they came to us very late in the game on that, so we weren't able to come to an agreement on that, but, um, sit down and talk about that again. Um, that's an encouraging thing. Um, but also they, he, I learned about a program that I did not know existed, um, for Army. I know my, my nephew experienced it at the Naval Ca- Academy, um, and it was very beneficial to him and folks who were in his life while he was in, at the academy or still in his life. Now it's a host program where local families sort of adopt a cadet, um, for the year and have them over for family meals periodically. You know, do, go do events, maybe let them do a little laundry. Um, and I said that's something I didn't even know about. Maybe you knew about it. Um, so we're gonna talk about how we can, um, as a, as a sort of a team approach, get the news out in the community that that's, that's a possibility and a good thing. Um, I think that there was the impression that there is, there's a disconnect. Um, and I was explaining to them that there's more of the connection between us and, and the academy than we realized because so many of our, of our young people participate in the athletic programs. They're really, they're really excellent athletic programs. So a lot of us are on and off base a lot from the village. Um, so anyway, that was great. Little, little feel-good moment. Um, and I'll just repeat the workshops, shop workshop schedule, January eighteenth, parking plan rollout. Update and discussion on continuation of ticketed events in village parks. January twenty fifth, update from the ad hoc committee on zoning code revisions and February first, short-term rental workshop. I think that is everything from us. So we're ready to public comment? You're the last member, the only member of the public in the room. I'll start with you, MJ.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Happy New Year.
Happy New Year to you.
Just wanted to make sure.
Um, state your name.
Oh, I'm sorry.
And if you're representing yourself or someone else.
MJ Martin, uh, I am representing Hudson Highlands Fuhr Trail, uh, tonight. Thank you. Um, I just wanted to make sure that the, all the trustees and the mayor and all the community members who are on and those who will watch later, uh, know that they are welcome to join us at the Cold Spring Firehouse on February second for a parking and shuttle o- open house that is gonna focus on Village of Cold Spring community members and dig into some of the issues that we talked about, um, at our December sixth webinar. Um, just kind of with a really, really kind of micro-focus on issues of village members. That's gonna take place, as I said, at the Cold Spring Firehouse. It's gonna be an open house style. So it's gonna be six to eight P M. You can come at any time uh, that it's convenient for you during those bad two-hour period. There will be no presentations. There will be no, you know, it's, it's really, it's gonna be kind of stations. There'll be Fuhr Trail representatives there. We're hoping, um, we're, we're discussing with trustee Starbuck and the mayor. Um, if the mayor, uh, if the, the board would like to present on your plan um, that's forthcoming for parking, because we know that these things need to work together. Um, and we wanna make sure that we, we present as broad and complete a picture for Cold Spring, uh, residents. But come for ten minutes, come for twenty minutes. Talk to who you wanna talk to, get questions answered, uh, learn more. Um, and we're also gonna be, we're reaching out to, uh, to community members via social media. We've got this on our website. We'll be sending out postcard invitations to residents of the village. And we'll have ads in the paper just because I've gotten some feedback that we need to be a little broader in how we communicate because everybody is not on Facebook, although it kind of seems like that sometimes.
The help, the, the folks who have the, the healthier perspective on life are not on Facebook.
But anyway, um, all are welcome. All, all, all village residents are welcome to this.
I have two questions for you.
Sure.
How will you, um, when we had the, the seminar last on this topic, the broader conversation, it was recorded and it was posted on your website. How will you report out, how will the, how will the public have access to the conversations that you had or the conclusions you reached in that session?
What we're planning on doing is adding this to the overall final report of recommendations on our parking and shuttle study. This will be kind of an, an added piece to that, um, that conversation and all the findings that we got from various surveys. We also will be having a survey that will be available that night for residents on specific parking and shuttle issues that we'd like to get a little more feedback on, particularly from the village perspective. We'll also be sending around a Q R code so that people can do that online or they can do it the old-fashioned handwritten way. Um, so when that information is compiled, we will share that gladly with the board.
Thank you. I, I'm interested to see how, just from a, a meeting organization perspective, how this, how this goes in terms of, of open house. It's, it's, it's a good opportunity to do what, to try it out in the evening, later in the evening, um, and in a less formal way. So hopefully you get more participation that way. So.
We're hoping many people come out, and if they can't come out, that they feel free to fill out the survey online. Um, and then there's, there'll be a place for comments, so they can add additional comments there.
I, I would like to advocate again, um, we're in a public session. I'd like to advocate again for you to extend that invitation to residents of the village of Nelsonville who are not so far away from us and experience many of the over tourism impacts that we do. Um, it doesn't stop, it doesn't stop at Cedar Street. Um, and I think their perspective is important too. So I really encourage you to, to open those doors widely too and, and really make sure that, that Nelsonville is being heard in this larger process as well.
Thank you for that feedback. Um, we're not gonna have bouncers at the door. We're not gonna be checking IDs, but, um, we have reached out, both Amy Casala and I have reached out to Mayor Winward.
Great.
And extended an invitation for us to come and present at their board.
That's great.
You know, give a presentation on the project, get their point of view, find out what specific issues Nelsonville residents are feeling and, and what they, what they are looking for, um, in terms of collaboration.
Great, and hopefully that will lead to inclusion of Mayor Winward in the steering committee, I hope. She, she really deserves to have a place at that table. Um, okay, great. Well, we'll see you on the second.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. And thank you for sitting through all of those monthly reports to make your announcement.
I, I wanna add one more thing, um, MJ. Um, it might be helpful too for your team to be at our meeting next week on our parking plan so that you guys have all the details, because I know it's informing your decision-making as well. So, um.
I wrote it, I wrote your back.
Very much.
I know it's.
You know, welcome, and we hope that you'll be there.
Because who can get enough parking?
Yeah. Looking forward to it. I eat this stuff for breakfast.
Thank you.
Liza asked me to, uh, when did we start the process? And it was fifteen years ago.
Yeah.
No. Well, Anthony and.
That original parking.
And Doug and Donna Steltz and Mike Armstrong.
I forgot that Donna Steltz, but we're trying to think of who the others were. Right on. So, how many fruition?
Frank.
Oh, Frank. Can't remember his last name, but Frank. No. It'll come to us eventually. Uh, any other comment from trustees? Anything else to discuss?
Any public, uh, line? Nothing from Mike, nothing from Billy.
Wow. Okay, so I will make a motion to adjourn. On favor?
Hi. Good night, everybody.
Thank you for coming in.
Good night. Thank you. Bye.
Night, Dan.
Hi, Lily.
Oh, no, Lily, I'm, sorry.